I'd like to call to order the regular work session for the city of Flaglerville. At five oh five, November twenty fifth and welcome everyone. We have two items on the agenda. To A discuss presentation, discussion and presentation regarding the water master plan and wastewater master plan. Brandon.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So I appreciate you taking the time this evening to to hang out with me for a little bit and talk about, you know, water. I know how much y'all love hearing me ramble on about it.
Oh, I do. I enjoy it very much.
We all do. And also wanted to just take the moment to, you know, thank y'all for supporting us for, uh, this is my last council meeting, so I appreciate, uh, y'all supporting us for the past, at least my time here for the past six years. So greatly appreciated the support and everything that y'all allowed us to do. So. With that, we'll start with the water master plan. We'll go through water and wastewater. Y'all seen some of these slides before, um, but feel free, y'all know the drill. Feel free to like interrupt, ask me questions, or I've got, um, Michelle Dodd here from Garber. We, you know, we're talking before Thanksgiving, so it's hard to schedule everybody out. So I've got the water folks here, and if we need to come back and do wastewater folks later, we can schedule that at another time. But Thanksgiving week, it was hard to get everybody to be here. So. Um, so as we go through the water master plan, I'll do just a quick overview. I know we've discussed this a couple of months ago as well. Um, so the the master plan itself obviously serves as a five-year framework for guiding water, water, and when we get to wastewater, wastewater infrastructure. Um, and long-term management of those resources. Um, so our, it is bound by the CCN, the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity that we have, um, that currently has five pressure plants. Um, so during these master planning processes, we look at, uh, three different horizons. We look at the five years, so twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty planning horizon, twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five planning horizon, all the way to the ultimate build out of the water system. So when we look at development projections, which again, this is what the same slide that we had a couple of months ago. Um, so we look at single-family apartments, commercial, depending on what they are, and we look at current development, whether they're in some sort of stage, whether it's preliminary plat, final plat, construction. Wherever they're at in that planning horizon or that development horizon, and what the typical timeline is between that horizon to when we actually see that hit the ground. Um, so a lot of these shaded areas that are in here are also within the master plan as well. Uh, these show generally what they are zoned for, and these all reference back to the Aspire twenty forty plan, um, or to the city strategic plan. Um, so we follow that as guidance of what the density is based upon what that plan is, what their zoning is, and also where they're at in their development horizon. So same slide that we had a couple of months ago, or, um, talking about the connection count. Um, so as I spoke about before, uh, whenever we had the public hearing here for the for the water master plan, you'll see the big jump that we had in twenty seventeen. Uh, that big jump in twenty seventeen, as I discussed then, was when the city took over the retail connections for North Travis County Mudd Five. Um, so that's the area, that's Springbrook area. So, uh, that was previously served by Manville. Um, the city worked out a agreement with Manville to be able to take those customers as our water CCN customers. Um, and then therefore you see that big jump, right? So those are now our retail customers that we supply water to.
Would you mind showing on the map the area that was converted?
Sure. So it's like the northwest corner of the city. I don't know if I have a good way to point to it or not. Tris is gonna help me because I don't think you, I appreciate it. Um, so you're looking right up in, I think that's the right area. I'm kind of zoomed out a little bit, uh, right in this area, right over here. Um, so the west side of Heatherwild, um, over on that general area.
Yeah, I know you weren't here at the time, but what was the reason that we took over that area, if you know?
Um, we were already doing the, I'm gonna go to the next one, but, um, yeah, but we were already doing, from my understanding, we were already doing the retail side of that. So we did a lot of retail service for a lot of the municipal utility districts. That was one of them, along with the other ones along Blackhawk, along Blackhawk area. Um, so we were already providing retail service. I think the, the. Bonus was to be able to provide them full service, water and wastewater to get the CCN, so that way we're not paying Manville for water and then doing the retail on the backend.
Can you explain that when you say we were doing the retail?
So we, we weren't the water provider. Manville Water Supply Corporation owned the CCN, so they were the water provider. So they provided the wholesale water. We did the retail. So we operated their system. We fixed water lakes. We did their meter reading. We did the utility billing aspect, everything that goes into running a water system. Um, we, we were doing that, but we weren't supplying the actual water that was in the pipes. Um, so the retail side is all of the things you think of when you think of what the water utility does, right? We do the billing. We do the meter reading. We do all the leak repair and all that stuff. Um, but we weren't actually the water provider. So, um, but as far as the rationale behind why staff decided to move that route, I, I mean, it's a guess from my position. So. Um, my guess would be, yeah, it's kind of an awkward arrangement to be the retail provider, but you're not the actual, you're not putting the water in the pipes. Um, so. But also, but that caused that increase in the connections and that you see in twenty seventeen. Um, and then there's that steady incline from twenty seventeen onward. Um, some, some notes that I think are included in the master plan that you'll, or that you probably see in our data is, there's also an odd drop in like twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Um, so we counted previously all of the connections up in Blackhawk, so the ones that we technically are not the water provider for, but we were doing the retail service, much like I was talking about with Springbrook. Um, we counted that as the total connection count, but we weren't the water provider for those areas. Manville Water Supply Corporation was and still is. Um, so these connections here, as opposed to the last master plan, show it just who we're providing water to, not all the retail connections that we possibly were previously providing service to. So when we look at, uh, these master plans, we're looking at both average and max day. So it's, it's important to note, um, while average day is important from an overall three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Um, the important point to note is we don't design water treatment systems to do average day. Otherwise, a lot of people would be out of water in August, um, because we have to be able to meet per TCUQ, we have to meet both peak day and peak hour demands. So when everybody irrigates their grass in August, when it's a hundred and ten degrees outside, we have to be able to meet those peak day demands. So we have to design water systems to meet those peak day and peak hour demands. Um, so when we talk about, you know, peak hour, peak, peak day, we have to be able to meet those, otherwise obviously people won't have water. Um, so. When you see me pushing for, hey, let's not irrigate as much, let's zero escape a lot more. When I, we're trying to push those rebates, it's to extend that capital life as long as humanly possible. Oh, sorry. Just kind of came from behind there. So I was like, what is that noise? Um, so, um, so anyway, so it's important to note the difference between the two. So you have average day and you have peak day demands, no matter what water system you're at, and you have to make sure that you meet peak day. Our goal is to drive that peak day usage down to be able to extend capital improvements as long as humanly possible, which is a big change from twenty nineteen, where it was kind of a little bit Wild West, where two days a week watering, just everybody, no, no incentives to conserve water. So.
What are the mitigation factor or steps that we can take to smooth out, um, peak hour or peak day, or what have we done so far? What's worked?
Um, so some of that is about what days of the week you irrigate, um, what days of the week, how, so we updated our DCP or drop contingency plan over the past. Some of it is due to LCRAs changes, who's our raw water supplier. Um, but a lot of those have to do with how we have smoothed out that curve. So what you see, you'll see these huge peak days. So what we've done on that DCP is make it to where it's more extended through the week, so that way those peak days kind of follow seven days a week, instead of having two peak really high days. Um, so what that does is it spreads that peak load out. So instead of having a really high one day and then six days of lower, it allows you to spread it out. So those updates, while they're fun to do, because it's. Uh, we get to bother folks like Stan and Charlie for, to review our ordinances and our changes. Um, those, those drop contingency plans are super important with how they allow us to be able to both strategize. You know, getting that water curve flatter and also be able to make sure that we're compliant with our raw water contract.
And just maybe ballpark, is the demand response like five percent impact? How much, how impactful is it?
For, um.
For conservation?
Yeah. Um, it kind of depends. Um, it depends on season, right? So it also depends on Highland Lakes variability, likely, like, there's a lot of variability. Um, I think our first year when we moved to one day, when we had to go down to one day a week irrigation, we saw the swap, I mean, you can kind of see it from the peak in that chart. Where that peak in the yellow is when it got up to about sixteen and a half million, when it went, and then it went down to like thirteen, I think was our peak day. So it can have a pretty substantial impact. Um, it, it just kind of depends on how you want to enforce it.
Sure.
Um, so I think that we have a very, my opinion is that we have a very well-educated populace that is very like, let's do the right thing, and they see the Highland Lakes going empty, and they're like, hey, maybe we shouldn't irrigate our grass today. So, um, and they're, and they're very, uh, what I would say compliant for one day a week watering. Um, so we don't have a lot of, uh. Violators of the three, four, I'm just gonna water every day because I feel like it. Um, so, which is great for as a community. So, excuse me. Um, so as part of that master plan too, there's, um, there's some capital improvements that are in there. Some of these are already in the works, some of those are already aware of. Um, but these also look at the both five, ten, and build out, um, build out need. Um, these are evaluated every single year. Uh, so we go through these and go, is it needed? Is it not needed? Can we delay? Can we push this a year? Can we not push this a year? Um, so those are generally looked at every single year on how much is this actually needed? Is everything tracking where it needed to be? Do we need to push this, which is what we do every single year when we come to y'all for a CIP? So to give you all an idea of timeline, so this is one that y'all haven't seen. So let's give you a timeline of how we got, got here for like, because the biggest, our biggest capital projects that we have on the water side, at least going right now, are the water treatment plant expansion and the secondary Colorado River Raw Water Line. And I realize that's a mouthful. Um, but, so to give you an idea of how we got here, so twenty nineteen, I believe we've all lived here since before then, probably some of us longer than others, but, uh, but, uh, but twenty nineteen, if y'all can recall, we had a variety of treatment issues. So a lot of treatment issues at our water treatment plant. Uh, it was a, we lost a lot of public trust, um, frankly. Um, that's generally what happens when something, when you have something of that magnitude happen.
How many violations do we have in two thousand nineteen?
So in twenty nineteen, it was seventy-four total. Um, so seventy-four total. The TCUQ can only look back, uh, jog my memory, it's twelve months. So they can only look back twelve months in violations. It's similar. They won't go back four, five, six years. Um, so over the, the previous twelve months, it was seventy-four violations. There was a multitude of different ones. So some of them were treatment techniques, which are treatment technique violations means we have to give out public notice as soon as like they give us like the green light to do it. And then you have what are called tier three non-treatment techniques, which those go out in the annual consumer competence report. So overall, if seventy-two or seventy-four, it's one of those two. It was above seventy. Um, so, but it was a significant amount. Um, and of course, as you're all probably very well aware, something like that happens with your water system. You lose a lot of public trust, public faith, and like how you're operating the water system. And so it also brought to light a lot of issues with the water treatment plant, um, with, that we had to address one way or the other. And TCUQ is very clear that we had to address these problems, and we had to do both some temporary measures that we've done over the past, for the first couple of years that I started here. And then we also had to look at long-term, like what's the right thing to do, knowing that we have these long-term issues with our water treatment plant.
And now did TCUQ impose monetary fines, or was this, uh, sort of a, we're getting your attention and you need to make some changes right away, uh, assessment in the violations in two thousand nineteen?
Well, there's a multitude of things. Uh, so, uh, they did what's called a special performance evaluation, which are not very common, but they do these. Um, they provided a.
That's that AD some odd page document? Yeah.
Um, and so which provided recommendations of, here's what you're doing wrong, here's what you need to do better, here's what you need to fix, all that kind of stuff. Um, there was also monetary violations as a result of that. Um, again, I, I caught the tail end of it, uh, but I, I remember.
You came on just as we were, we were catching all this flack.
It was a good time. Um, and so we did a, I, uh, piggyback onto what's called a SEP, which is a supplemental supplemental environmental program. Um, so instead of paying a fine, you can do an environmental thing for your community, uh, that benefits your community, but offsets the cost of a fine. So we were, it had already been approved by TCUQ by the time I got here, or it was in the works. Um, so we did a supplemental environmental process, uh, project, which was both asbestos and lead remediation, uh.
Asbestos and what remediation?
Lead.
Lead remediation.
Um, so there was a house near Becker Farm Road. Um, we call it the Beely House. I don't know if y'all know. Um, so that, that house was, it had both asbestos siding, asbestos, like a pretty well hazardous material.
It was a toxic waste site.
Pretty much. So we remediate, when we tore that down, it was part of that SEP.
Okay.
So instead of paying the fine, we did an environmental project, which TCUQ allows you to do to offset that. Um, but they also, that, the SPE, the details all the things that we needed to correct moving forward. Um, both as a temporary and as a, like a long-term, we needed to define solutions to these problems, um, through, in coordination with the state. Um, so that was issued in twenty twenty. Uh, so, but, uh, so, but we also, in twenty twenty, we also, the water master plan was adopted. Uh, that was in the original from five years ago. I said the original, one from five years ago is twenty twenty. Um, that was adopted about two months after I started with the city, I think January of twenty twenty, or maybe February. Um, and then we, that, that, uh, master plan identified, you know, projects, and of course, when any master plan's adopted, you know. Staff's job is, it's been adopted, our job is to execute based upon what that master plan outlines. And so that, that master plan showed that to both expand the water treatment plant. Uh, as well as a secondary Colorado, the, the two projects that we're talking about right now, the secondary Colorado River Raw Water Line and the water treatment plant expansion. Um, the, the big key point of that master plan also should be noted is that that master plan only contemplated, you just plop down a second of the same one, right? And given the fact that twenty nineteen happened, and we had all these variety of issues that we needed to address, it wasn't just as simple as I just plop down one of these little membrane units and it's perfectly fine.
We had to replace a number of the membrane units because they were, they were badly worn out at that point. Is that correct?
Yeah, they were bad. I wouldn't say worn out. They were damaged. Um, so there's zebra muscle shells that had come in and damaged everything. Um, there was a lot of significant damage to equipment that had happened. Um, as a result of kind of some like long-term damage, both with Asiatic clams and with zebra mussels.
And those are both invasive species that we got from Lake Travis.
Um, so I, I don't know if Asiatic clams are considered invasive. They're ubiquitous, kind of all around, all around Central Texas. Um, zebra mussels are invasive. Um, but yeah, they're in, once they're in one water body, it's just a matter of time before they're in another one. Um, while we don't allow boats to come into Lake Fleerville, uh, which is normally how they get transported, we're pumping from the Colorado River, which has zebra mussels in it. So you're, you're, it was bound to happen where you're gonna pump the villagers into the lake and then they just.
Anything that gets in Lake Travis eventually gets to us.
Correct.
It's, and it's usually not very long.
It's not long. Correct. Um, so if it's in the Highland Lakes, more than likely, we've got it. It's just a matter of time. Um, but those caused damage to the membranes themselves, which made us, which informed a lot of decisions that we had to make for that design. Um. And then.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, we have upgraded the membranes, uh, to be a little bit more resistant? Is that, is that correct? Did I understand that right?
Are you talking about the expansion?
Yes.
The, the expansion? So the expansion, so the, um, the thing you see, if I can find the mouse, which I don't know if I can, um.
Am I getting, am I skipping ahead? I'm sorry.
No, you're totally, I'm, I'm, I'll do this all night and then.
Thank you.
Everybody will hate me for it later.
We, we are going to miss this so much.
Um, so it's not that we, shoot, um, so it's not that we, we've, there are different membranes that we're putting in the new membrane building over here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's important to note that we added to address zebra mussels and any, and also any future, I don't know what the future holds for what other invasive species could happen, um, that we would pump in, but this pre-treatment basin right here that you see.
Yeah.
Uh, allows those kinds of things to not actually get to the membranes themselves. They fall out to the bottom.
Okay.
So it's enhanced coagulation that allows everything to fall down.
All right. So the new plant expansion will be less vulnerable to this than the, than the old plant?
Correct. Yeah. So, so yeah, it's, you have a lot more robust treatment system, so you're, you get a little bit more flexibility on what you can, you can receive from raw water variability, whether it's invasive species or otherwise. It also reduces what's called TOCs. So TOCs are total organic carbons. I know it's a ton of acronyms.
I'm sorry. The TOCs are what? I think.
Total organic carbons?
Total organic carbons, like you and me.
Something like that. Um, but the, so it's naturally present in any water body. So the, this pre-treatment basin reduces those. Why that's important is because on the backside of the membrane building are also what's called a chlorine contact basin. So right now it goes directly into the membranes and out. We chlorinate it. It creates what are called disinfection byproducts, which I think y'all probably have heard me talk about before. Um, but TOCs, the higher your TOCs, the higher your disinfection byproducts. So it's twofold. We reduce our TOCs and we reduce our, our risk when it comes to invasive species or any type of raw water variability.
And that's going to reduce our use of, uh, the, uh, cleaning compounds and then, and also reduce our, uh, chemical byproducts that we're discarding?
Um, disinfection byproducts are a byproduct of, of water, treated water, treated water disinfection. And so the way that the current plant is currently designed, there is no, there's no buffer there. It's, you have high TOCs coming in because there's nothing to, to address it outside of the membranes, and you're keeping them in contact with the disinfectant for longer than you need to, which means it constantly is just creating more and more disinfection byproducts.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a lot of things over here I want to say. Um, one of them, I just kind of, I'm sitting here and I'm feeling like we're really getting in the weeds a little bit. Um.
I apologize. That's probably.
I've always dragging us down in those weeds. It happens. But I've always trusted your, and I was gonna save this to the end, I've always trusted your expertise.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I've never met anyone so giddy and happy about talking about water. You get so happy about it. So when I heard that you were leaving, I was probably one of the ones that probably didn't say congratulations right off, because I'm sad to see you go. And so the whole thing is, is that four years ago, when I first started on city council, the first place I was taken to on a field trip was to the water treatment center to see what was being flushed down the toilet. And what we drink. And so I've trusted your expertise since then. And so I get concerned when we get in the weeds, because while I enjoy learning too, is this what we're here for? And so, um, I, I'll have more questions and probably more things to say at, at the end. There's a fine line because this is the work session, right? And this is a space that is, I said, your table is far away. This is supposed to be a space where we can, can, can ask questions and say what we want to say. And so I'm sitting here quiet and silent, but. We, we, we keep getting off on what we're supposed to be talking about. I appreciate the timeline. And I'll, in closing, I'll say that I'm so excited and glad that you were here. Um, when these variety of treatment technique violations happened, and you helped us to clean it up, and you came in when the waster, uh, the water master plan was already pretty much in motion. And so I'm grateful for that. Um, but I want to make sure we stay focused on what, and especially being that this is your last night of council, that we hear what you need to say in these slides. Um, and that you get us. On focus for where we need to be going, because this is happening. And we can't do anything without water. You know, I have some other questions, like, has the city council been a barrier to you in any way? I know you can't, maybe you don't want to answer these questions, but it's serious. Like, how do we move forward? What advice and recommendations do you have for us for the next person who's sitting in your seat? This is moving forward. We can't do anything without water. I digress. Mayor, you're supposed to be hitting that gavel over there when I do this. Thank you.
Uh, but I'll, I'll finish timeline, then we can go to wastewater. I'm happy to stop. I'll do this. I'll talk all night. So I'll, but I appreciate it. I will. So I'll, but I appreciate it. I will. Thank you very much. I very much appreciate it. Um, I will finish our timeline and then I'm happy to, yeah, feel free to, we can go to questions at the end, but I'll go through wastewater as well. Um, so uh, to give, so construction began on the water treatment plant 2023, as you're all aware. And then also we delivered on getting construction for the secondary Colorado River Raw Water Line as well in 2024. Um, both of those projects are on schedule uh so far. Uh, plan to be done next year, uh, next calendar year. So when we get into wastewater, um, no, Michelle can't help us here, um, but you know, she'll be here for it. Um, they're mainly on the water side. Uh, so same, same overview here for the wastewater.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just want to back up just for a second because uh, the question, I think in our discussions, you've explained this to me in a way that maybe I can't explain it to other people. Um. Why is it that we were not able to go immediately to direct potable reuse? We had to go ahead and have that secondary raw water line from the Colorado. What was the need and what are the advantages of having that and then having direct potable reuse in our future? And what's the, the timeline for that? And what's that timeline based on? I'm sorry. That's like five questions.
Should have, I should have wrote down, uh, but yeah, the, um, so why deep, so DPR, when we were first talking about, um, like designing the water treatment plant expansion, it was in the future purview. Um, there's a couple of things that get in the way. You know, you're, there's a lot of permitting that's involved in DPR. It's not just as simple as I put this on the ground and magically have water.
And that's only been a three to five-year permitting process? But in an emergency situation, it might be less?
In a very aggressive world, three to five years, right? Um, and so that would be no, no delays, no hangups. And this is the government we're talking about. We're going to have delays, right? There's going to be a hangup of the state. There's going to be a hangup of the federal government. We'll have delays. So the, the, the concern there would be, okay, if you, if you do that, are you putting your water system at continued risk by doing that? So that's one. So are, what's the risk reward there? Um, but then also you have to figure out, all right, is it, does it make sense to do that with our own water? Where you only get a certain amount of recovery from your own water? And there's going to be a loss in there somewhere.
Usually about 10%, 15%?
It depends on the water system. Um, you know, the, the wastewater plant itself still has to use water. And so that's all still our, quote unquote, our water. Um, so there's a lot of variables out there that are a little bit more unknown, which increases your risk profile. And when you're talking about, you know, water and like a water system, you know, we're pretty risk averse. Um, like I, I, our, our goal is to make sure that the system is as robust and resilient as possible and to make sure that everybody always has water. And to put that kind of a risk profile in front of the city would be a very big step forward that I don't know that I would feel comfortable doing, or I would have been comfortable doing in 2021.
And, and because we were so close to the emergency situation we had in 2019. That's part of it.
And, and we're, we're essentially, we only took temporary measures to like stave off, right? So some of those things are temporary measures to, knowing that the expansion would happen. So we're going, we made temporary, like small things, small changes to make sure it lasted until the end of that expansion, which would not have lasted till we got a DPR project online. Um, and again, you could run into hangups along the road that could make it even worse. So it puts a very high risk profile on the city to do that, um, with no other plan in place.
So I had questions about the changes between the 2020 master plan, the 2023 update and the 2025 master plan in terms of growth of water connections.
Sure.
Um, originally it was confusing to me when I, you know, I had not read of those in detail. Um, that the connections listed in the 2020 plan for 2019 had, were higher than what we were listed as having today. And you have now explained that it was because that the Manville connections that we were serving retail were being included in the water master plan. So when I take those out and look at the historical data of just our water C C N, um, you know, it looks like the growth of the connections, you know, was between two and a half to three and a half percent. Yet in the water master plan in 2020 and, and then 2023, taking out the Manville portion, we had growth estimates of over eight percent going for, you know, five years and then seven percent later. And then when I looked at it in the 23 update, not only did we not have that growth and it was more flat, but then we actually in, um, included higher growth starting in the 2023, which was just two years ago. So if you compare those, those two plans to the one that Garver presented to us for 2025, which brought it down to two percent in the next five years and three and a half in the five years after that, that is a large reduction in our growth estimates. And so to me, I want to understand, how did that impact what we, projects we decided to do? And then with the growth reduction or the, the reduction of the growth projections, how does that inform what we're deciding to do and what we're prioritizing going forward? Because that is a lot less connections to pay for all of these fixed costs that are in progress right now.
Good. So, so as far as where, where those growth numbers, I, and I believe the Freeze and Nichols folks have said that before. I think at the time, that's what they were seeing before that overall for the city. Um, I, neither one of us can tell you what Freeze and Nichols, like where they got those numbers. I imagine they got them from what the city was seeing at the time. Um, but as far as the 2023 update, I don't know if they even did, that wasn't, that wasn't a full master plan. That was more about, we're updating costs and ma, and that's generally it. Every single one of those annual updates.
The growth change. So when they included Manville, it was a six percent growth projection. But when you excluded Manville, because Manville was apparently growing more than the rest, it dropped it, um, or it increased that to about eight percent. So, but it was six percent with, including Manville. And then 2023, it still included Manville and it had a 7.31% in the table that they had. So we went from six percent growth projection to 7.3% growth projection, even though our growth was more like two percent. So.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And, and what was explained to me was that, and correct me if I'm wrong in how, um, this happens with the, you know, maybe Michelle uh has more insight into this. But, um, I was, um, led to, to believe that, um, staff is providing some estimates of how each of the lots in the, the area are projected to grow and what percentage of, of development they're going to be at different stages. And so, um, I was just wondering what changed, you know, um, and maybe it's just the economy or the development horizon or I'm not sure, but I just want to make sure that we are using a reasonable growth percentage in looking at the projects going forward.
If I can try to clarify, thank you. Good points. Um, whether it was six percent or seven percent is the question, would we have changed our capital expenditures based on that difference of population? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because it was, I, I don't know how much of the decisions were made based on the growth projection, but it was extremely high. Um, and so when you look at what they're projecting, you know, in the 2030 timeframe to what is now on this master plan, it's about a 40% decrease. Um, so I'm not sure what would have changed, but I just, I want to know what would have changed, but also making sure that we're using good estimates going forward in what we need to, to do for capital projects.
So I'm kind of hearing two different, yes. So I think the question, and Michelle, you might be able to, do we make linear decisions based on population as it relates to water infrastructure growth? I think that's one question. And so would it matter if there was a population difference? Cause I haven't heard that yet or seen that. So let's start with that one. If our numbers are not being reflective accurately, yes, we would like to fix it. My main concern, I think, and yours may be Melody, is did, would that have changed what we did?
And I'm not sure, um, if population is the right term or water connect, this is water connections and there's an estimate of population, not actually in the Garber plan, in the previous ones there were. Um, and, but it's tied with water usage based on the type of connections that we have. Right?
I, I think that's right. Also, I think the, the, part of the, the question is not, would we have, have done these projects? But when would we have done these projects if we had different? So are, are timelines being affected by, uh, the, by the estimates of increased use? And given a reconciliation of actual projected, do we need to make changes in the timelines?
Okay.
And one time you gave me a good story about an apartment complex. You have to build to the max. You know, you can't try to take guesses at vacancy rates, et cetera.
We have to assume full vacant. Yeah, if it's 400 unit apartment complex, you have to assume it's 400 full units, right? So you, you can't just pick and choose like, well, there are 50% vacant this month. Like, that's not how that works. Um, but, but I'll touch on the capital piece real fast. So the, the capital piece, I, I think that's why I had the slide about the timeline. Um, because it's important to note too, that would it have changed the outlook on it somewhat? Um, but it also, keep in mind, there was a lot of external factors that we had to address. So 2019 made it to where we had to do pre-treatment and we had to make sure we were addressing DBPs. Like, so it may have changed the size of it, but it also, the other point on this that I'll go back to that slide. Um, when you're looking at 2020, 2022, when we have a capacity of 17.7 million gallons per day and we're doing a peak day of 16.6, it's a little bit scary. Um, so were their projections off? For their growth rate? It may have been, but I think also there was some external factors with like, there was a, there was a pandemic in 2020, if y'all remember. Um, so, so like you see this like dip in like a lot of things that happen. So I, I, it's hard, it's easy to look in hindsight at like, was their projections off? Looking at it now, of course they were. Um, but when you're looking at it from their lens before COVID, before all these external factors came in, then they're looking at it from what historically what they were seeing, what was already coming into Flugerville before that pandemic.
However, what just, um, that's my concern with the 2023 update. So we, we were past that. We saw the impact and the growth rate went down. But we even said, well, it's, we're still going to end up pretty much, you know, close to the same ending uh connections at this certain time, which was, you know, six or seven years in the future. So yes. So my concern also, you know, is the 2023 update. When we saw the change in the water connection growth, um, why was 20, you know, the 23 update so vastly different than this one in 2025? So.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably a question for, for Freeze and Nichols more than it is the two of us. Um, I mean, there was a structural change with utilities as a whole, with how we looked at those master plans about 20, at the end of 2023. And those are usually done six months before y'all actually see them. Um, so, but it would be a question for Freeze and Nichols, not the two of us in particular. Um, but I mean, but happy to ask them why they didn't. They may not even looked at that growth and maybe just assumed that it was similar because I think their biggest annual update was not a full five-year update. It was a, let's make sure we're keeping our costs in line because there was a significant amount of like cost, external cost implications that were happening for all of our capital projects, uh, that we wanted to make sure that we captured and then make sure we looked at everything closely. Um, so, but it would be more a question for Freeze about those growth, their growth projections and how they were looking at that growth. Um, but I think to answer, but to go back to answer your question about capital, it, it impacts capital and how our growth patterns are, are going. Um, but also keep in mind that it's not just as, the water treatment plant is not just as simple as going, look at our growth. It's also, we have a lot of external problems with that water treatment plant that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later. Um, that we're putting the, the utility as an overall, a very high risk profile. Um, so whether they were addressed in an expansion of like capacity or whether they were addressed as like an improvement project, you're still looking at a very significant capital cost. That's about 75% of that capital cost that we're spending on the water treatment plant right now.
Yeah. Would it be wrong, if I may characterize this, because I want to be very clear on this, regardless of a growth rate, whatever that projection was, and likely could have been wrong. I, I can, I can concede that to that. We were at capacity, I'm looking at max days. We were at capacity and we needed to build, right? Regardless of these projections of population or anything. Um, there wasn't a smaller, I'm trying to do side, there wasn't a smaller option to expand as we're getting hit with permit violations, we're getting hit with capacity problems. I think the question David added was, but I would characterize that right, Councilor Rogers, was, was there a, an, an option for smaller that would make lasting, I want to clarify, I'm going to add a piece, that would make, make sense financially long-term? And in other words, there might, would there have A, been a smaller option, but two, would the smaller option made sense when I know it's going to grow? I.
You, you could.
Yeah, that's, that's close to what I was saying.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, sure, you can make it smaller and then I got to dig it up and do it again five years later. That, that's what I want to be cautious about.
My concern though is I was not involved in 2019. You know, I, I vaguely remember this. But my concern was when we received information a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't really aware that, you know, it led me to believe that the 2019 issues was the major impetus to doing the new water treatment plant. However, in all of the, the press releases or news articles in the past few years, everything pointed to growth as the reason. And so to me, when I got it, I was like, well, this is a completely different story than what, you know, that I, that I was, it was in my mind.
There's an important piece that, um, you're also not mentioning with that, which there's a reason that we were able to secure equivalency funds for Texas Water Development Board and it's because of those violations. So a lot of that funding that we received was because of the violations.
Okay.
Um, so.
So that's a new piece of information. Thank you.
I don't think anybody's going to want to put a press release and somebody can tell me.
Sure, no.
Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna have all these, we had all these issues and this is what we're going to fix them. Because we, we knew we had a twofold problem, right? We knew that we were going to have to address some of this demand, whether, whether it was now or three years from now, but we also knew we had to address our water violation issues as well. Um, so there's a lot of, in the T W D B, what's called the PIF, we included those violations, which makes it score a whole lot better and gets us better funding for them.
Thank you for that additional detail.
I, I think that, uh, that the, the case has been made very well that we needed to do um, the water plant expansion right, right now and that we, we didn't have the option to do uh, the, the, the treated reuse at, at this time. But we are looking at doing the treated reuse in the future. One of the things we want to make sure is that when we do that and we spend the money to upgrade the system to do that, that we time it appropriately.
Correct. And, but just to, to answer, I think, uh, Senator Breland's, Breland's point, to do these in small, excuse me, I'm sorry, to do these in small chunks is a very, still a very monumental task. So you're getting chunks of debt and little, little chunks that are long-term debt. Um, so if you're trying to retrofit that, you're retrofitting it to 25 million gallons per day. And then you're going to go, all right, well, I may need five million extra in like 10 years or 15 years, which then becomes astronomically more expensive to do a five M G D expansion than a 12 M G D expansion or whatever it is. So just to point the.
I'm, I'm not advocating for that. I'm, I'm just, we know that we've got another improvement down the road. And the question is, how are we going to make sure that we, we put it in at the, at the right time? Where it's early enough that we don't have the, uh, recurrent, uh, uh, recurring problems that we had in 2019, but it's not, you know, 20 years before we need that. How are we going to make sure that? Because nobody is, is expecting anyone to, to, to foresee the COVID epidemic, right? As, as the mayor's childhood baseball hero used to say, it's difficult to make predictions, especially about the future. Um, and we're not expecting that, but we, we do need to, um, we need to match the actual data we have to the projections and then continue to refine our, our plans for the future based on that, that reconciliation.
Great.
That's, that's my concern.
Well, you totally answered this super easy because I've done it in my head a lot. Um, so when you're looking at a DPR, we made, we're very explicit with how we chose processes for the water treatment plant expansion, um, the whole process as itself, uh, to make sure that it would facilitate a future DPR project. Uh, the membranes are very, we're very picky with those membranes to make sure that they have the removal requirements that T C Q require. And also there's space available to be able to do what's either considered ozone, you can do U V A O P. There's a lot of different options you can do to do DPR. Um, the, when that break even point is, is when L C R A's raw water rate is so high that our ROI is cheaper to build a DPR instead of paying L C R A for raw water. that our ROI is cheaper to build a DPR instead of paying LCRAs for raw water. So it's an ROI calculation and it's very straightforward. I couldn't tell you when that day is going to be because I don't control LCRAs' raw water rates, so.
But you can look at the number and say, I don't know when the date is, but I can tell you what the number is. When the number gets to X, that's when it's time to move forward.
At current rates, right? I don't know what their future rates are going to look like. But I can say, at that rate, here's what my capital cost is to do, to do a DPR. And I can say, I, my ROI on that is 10 years compared to LCRAs' rates, right? So there's a balance there. We're not there yet.
Okay.
But LCRAs, just like every other water provider, raw water provider, has increases in their forecasts as well.
Do we have a formula for, for that decision?
It's very much an annual thing. You have to know what your capital costs are to do the project as well as know what their annual costs are on LCRAs. So you have to be able to look at where those are going to break even and then start moving that plan forward to do DPR.
So there's a formula with a lot of variables and we have to update the variables every year to decide whether or not now is the time to pull the trigger.
Correct. Yeah, and what your ROI is. So I'm going to move this over to wastewater. Wastewater is about as clear as mud. If I can get this slide to change, there we go. So wastewater, like we already mentioned, same idea, 5, 10 and full build out. As you're all very well aware, the wastewater CCN is massive. It extends all the way out to 973. So wastewater, same idea with development projections. The, the ones in the water and wastewater CCN, they, we've made sure that the two are getting the same info and they all generally jive. Where they deviate is where there's areas outside of the water CCN that are only in our wastewater CCN that look at those development projections. Mainly you're looking at those big blue blobs on the right side of the map. Those are the three new Sweden muds. So, and to give a little bit of historical flows for the central wastewater treatment plant. So to give you an idea of how the permit, the previous permit before the most recent expansion was 5.3 million gallons per day. Wastewater plants work on an annual average. So that's rolling 12 months of flow. The new permit that was completed in 2024, after a very long construction project, that went to 7.25 million gallons per day. So a point of that, why I put 2024 in parentheses, we had a work session with council in 2020 to 2021, somewhere in there, where you can see, we were well above our existing plant's permit, like well above it. We were operating that thing at the margins and we were in violation with TCQ while the plant was under construction. Another point of that is we have to make sure that we're complying with what's called the 75-90 rule. 75%, so 75-90 rule is 75% of design capacity, when you're hit that mark, you have, of your plant, current plant, you either have to be in design of an expansion or a new facility to be able to take that flow down.
Is that 75-90 the same rule for water and for wastewater?
Just wastewater.
And what is the, what's the rule for water?
Wastewater's got a lot more rules, or water's got a lot more rules. So Michelle can tell me if I'm going too far with this. There's like gallons per connection, elevated storage, there's pumping. If you do it with pumping, you can have a different variety of different rules that you can meet to meet water supply needs. But it's a lot more complicated and a lot different.
So it's not just 85, 90 or something like that?
There's a lot of different variables depending on if you're talking about treatment, if you're talking about elevated storage, pumping capacity, it just depends. Wastewater is mainly looking at treatment capacity. So...
Can I ask a question on the water? So does one day of being over whatever percentage, you know, the, the rule is for water, does that put us at, in need of having to build a new plant? Or is it like a certain time period?
It doesn't look at it like that. Water doesn't look at it in the same way that wastewater does, where you're looking at your available, your firm capacity. You're looking at it from, again, you look at elevated storage, pumping capacity, gallons per connection. It just depends. So just because your firm capacity is 17.7, if you're running like 18 million gallons per day out of a 17.7 million gallon per day plant, you're overperforming your own performance. So you're, you're about to like, at any point, you could just be on like no water. So, but they're all built with some level of redundancy to be able to meet a little bit more than that demand. But TCQ requires a firm capacity, which is you subtract your largest treatment unit from your overall capacity. Because one unit is always generally out of commission or out of service doing maintenance or something.
So wastewater, is that, that 75, 90% trigger, is that, is that a, like a rolling one-month average or?
Annual average.
That's an annual number.
That's the annual average. So it's based upon your permit. You have to update that every month based upon the previous 12, previous 11 and that month.
So it's a, it's a rolling annual number?
Correct. I report it every single month to the, to the EPA. So the reason I bring this up though is that the central wastewater treatment plant in 2021, we were at 87% of the new plants. Before the expansion was completed, we were almost at 90% of that new permits capacity. So COVID was a fun time for wastewater systems. So obviously we were already moving forward with Willbarger, so we were, should have, we were still generally in compliance, but it's obviously a scary moment to be at a, you're constructing a plant and you're about to have to build a new plant like right away. And you're operating a plant very tight margins. So the table for wastewater, when you look at wastewater, this is again in the master plan, this looks at the different sewer sheds, the different basins. You have Central, Willbarger, Cottonwood West, Cottonwood East. So it also looks at those growth projections through each one. So the, the percentages are a little bit fun to look at because when you look at Cottonwood, it's a little bit misleading, right? Because 15, 15% of 1,200 is a lot less than, you know, 15% of 18, 17, 18,000. So I would probably caution the percentages when you're looking at those like rural areas because it's a lot easier to build one development of 500 homes in a very sparse area. That can go up very quickly. And also, but it brings the percentage way up. That's how numbers work. So this looks at all the way out to build out as well. And then also just an overview of some of those capital projects. Future, some of them are currently ongoing. And then again, some of them are further out depending on how development goes. Same as what I mentioned on the water side, these are evaluated on an annual basis with the, with the annual CIP to see what can be pushed, what can't be pushed and those kind of things as well. But with that, I will happily answer questions. So happy to, happy to talk water, wastewater as much as y'all want to.
We don't want to talk to you anymore. Congratulations though.
Well, obviously both topics are very complex and depending on, as you said, variables and unexpected situations and violations. And I mean, it's a lot to keep up with and I'm surprised that we've done as good a job as we have, given all of that and obviously a kudos to you and your staff for staying on top of that. And because as Mayor Pro Tim mentioned, water is, I mean, I've been on council talking about water since 2006. So back then it was a different issue, access, supply, delivery, different CCNs that we were dealing with. You know, Mandel was one of our biggest headaches years and years ago. And still may be, I don't know.
No, we've got a great relationship with them.
But so I, I think we've done a great job in, in all of those areas. I know they've been challenging and I know they've been expensive. But I think that, you know, I look back when the council decided to build a reservoir and that was before I was on council. But again, those were individuals that had a vision for being able to keep our residents with adequate water supplies and it wasn't cheap and it was a project. And I know we've had some tragic situations with the water plant over the years as well. And, but all fixed and so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Brandon, I remember hiring you and it was after some quite May Day times. Your work to build our watered wastewater system has been nothing short of transformational. Thank you for your leadership, your steady hand, your dedication to the people by half of the city. The pride that you bring to your work and to our community makes a very lasting difference for the city of Flugerville. Thank you.
Thank you for everything. We expect big things from you. Don't let us down.
I'll try.
I echo all the sentiments. I've enjoyed all of your presentations. I am interested in learning about what you have to say. I do have a couple of questions on the wastewater.
She's going to ruin it now.
I patiently waited my turn. So when I'm looking, you know, and I know that the engineers are not here that did the wastewater. But when I was looking at one of the tables, it looks like with the expansion to the 7.25 for the central and then bringing on the, the Willbarger, that it looks like we will not have to do any more expansions. And this graph, it says till 2054. Is, is that?
I think it depends on growth. It's always going to depend on growth.
Well, I mean, based on the growth projections in here.
I believe that you're looking at Centrals. Centrals, like what they have, which is the main sewer shed. Willbarger's growth is a little bit more, a little faster. So I think Willbarger is the one that you'll have, the Willbarger wastewater plant and the Willbarger sewer shed. Those are a little bit closer, but it's obviously going to be dependent on growth. I think it's right at the edge of the 10-year planning horizon. But most of that growth is out in the far east that we have to serve. So Cottonwood East, Cottonwood West. If I remember the graph correctly, I think it's right at 2035, but it's right on the cusp and it'll depend on growth in those three sewer sheds to the east of S.A. 130.
Yeah, to be determined.
To be determined, yeah. It could, it could get pushed out. I think that's kind of, that's the point of the 75-90 rule, so that way you can evaluate that. So yeah, it, but it depends. But Central, I believe is what you're looking at. Central is, yes, has a much further out if it ever needs to be expanded. But you still have a very old wastewater plant that's still active, that's about 40-plus years old. And the infrastructure, if you look at the facility, you can tell it's 40-plus years old and really hasn't had any kind of rehabilitation to it in 40 years.
Yeah, I think the graph was showing that it had capacity to divert growth at the Willbarger to the Central until 2054 was the graph that looked, until you got to the 90% and then you would have to expand.
If you make interim, you'd have to make other improvements, right? So you, you would be kicking, sure, you could, you can make what are called interim improvements. It's kicking the can down the road essentially is what you'd be doing. Because that force main from Carmel, which is the tipping of the Carmel lift station, that, that force main only has so much capacity. So you'd end up having to build a second pipeline to be able to extend that capacity of Central further. So you could, you could totally do that. Like, it's totally doable to do that. But you got to be okay with the fact that it's technically considered throwaway infrastructure, that you're wasting money to build a second pipeline that you know is going to gravity feed to Willbarger. So yeah, yeah, you could totally do that. But I, I think our goal is to pivot that and use that as a pivot point as long as we can to be able to extend those, those, those large capital projects. But it, some of those would involve some temporary, I wouldn't call temporary infrastructure. You're still put it in the ground, but.
So let me just make sure that I understood what you said. In order to move the capacity from Carmel, from Willbarger to Central, you'd have to build, you'd have to build the pipe to do that or that already exists.
In order to maximize Central to the full capacity, you, that force main is only, the existing force main is only so big. You can only put so much flow to the pipe. So you would, if you wanted to extend, having to do Willbarger further and further out, you would have to have a second pipe and extra pumps to be able to divert more flow over to it.
Okay, so maybe I misunderstood the graph.
Yeah, there, because I believe that, that there's three, I think there's two graphs in there. There's two like bar graphs. One of them shows Willbarger and the future expansion at Willbarger at 2030. Again, I think it's 2035.
Yeah, 37 on that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm interpreting these correctly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it.
All right, appreciate it, y'all. Thank y'all.
Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm good.
He just brought her here on Thanksgiving week and she got to sit next to Brandon.
We're like trying to get Michelle out. Family at home, like.
Item 2B is a discussion regarding Unified Development Code amendments. Ashley and company.
I'm expecting Jonathan to have a lot of questions about this part.
Listen and learn.
They've got an earful for me already.
We'll be talking water and I know.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am really excited and pleased to introduce, I'm sure you already know the Freeze and Nichols team, but Chance Sparks and Erica Craykrafter here. The, you may recall, the UDC Agenda or Unified Development Code contract was approved in late August and so now we have kicked that off. And after a meeting with PMZ and the Advisory Commission last month, we're here to discuss some of those topics, get your feedback on those and anything else that you may have for the team. So I'll kick it over to you.
All right, great. Chance Sparks and Freeze and Nichols, very happy to be here this evening to chat a little bit about your code. My goal with this presentation is to get through the first part of this so we get to the part where y'all are talking back with us about what some of your ideas, what some of your thoughts are, places we should be spending our energy as we, as we work through this code rewrite process. So, all right. So just a quick familiarization, this is our overall team. You will see some crossover with other projects you have going on, particularly your engineering criteria manual. So we are running these two processes concurrently. They do talk to each other. It's important that they coordinate. So we're going to kind of hit this overview, some initial input review and then kind of talk through what y'all want, what y'all, y'all's vision is as we go forward. So again, we're still in this kind of, this initiation phase, getting to this joint workshop. After we have this meeting, we shift heavily into the code drafting process. That's where us as planners go huddle up and do our planner things, much like how a water wastewater planner does their magic. We try to go do ours and present to you in a way that is digestible and easily understood. That's why you see the code delivered in modules, like to break it into pieces so you can actually digest it because it's profoundly unkind to show up with a 400-page document at the end and tell you, good luck, please adopt this. So I want y'all to be familiar along the way. So we've had some initial input. We've been working through several of your adopted plan documents, some of these that we worked on directly and some that others have worked on. For example, the comprehensive plan was one of our projects, but we've also been reviewing the code assessment report along the way. There are several key findings from this, this emphasis on housing diversity. Density and flexibility is a big value that we've seen come out of this. Finding ways to enable mixed-use development, doing it the Flugerville way. Assessing your development standards, what are the best ways to deliver the quality results you're seeking? What do you have, is it working? Is there a better way to do it? And just overall usability and organization. We call this the user experience focus, thinking like you as code users from the city council regulatory side, where you have to explain this to people in a coffee shop, but also thinking about it from the design professional side of can they easily and quickly find their answers? Is it written in a way where when they draw up their design, they're likely to get it right the first time? So that's clarity of communications, things like that. We often talk about codes in terms of they should be simple. They should not necessarily be weak, if that makes sense. You should be direct in what you're asking for, easily understood, communicate well and make sure you're organizing it with that in mind. Some of the themes that we heard from the advisory committee are themes that, that are reflected from the reports that we've read so far, the focus on housing diversity, smaller lots, accessory dwellings, a mix of housing types. Like many cities transitioning from, from suburb to something more. All cities like that are kind of grappling with this conversation. How do you keep that downtown identity while recognizing Flugerville's a growing place? How do you reinforce that as your key identity space and also support other areas? Focusing on parks and trails, we are well aware of your status as the trails capital. We want to embrace that. We want to celebrate that through the code. That was a big message that came out of the advisory committee. Thinking about how can we make the code work better for outcomes such as water conservation, such as, you know, climate-adapted landscaping, things like that? How do you approach your lighting regulations to deal with not just light trespass but glare? And then looking at the development process, how can you streamline things? You know, where you were when you wrote your Unified Development Code several years ago, Flugerville today is in a very different place. So we want to look for ways to create templates, clear playbooks for different development types. So A, everybody knows where they are in the development process and B, they can project what their timeline is. Time is money in the development process and we want to make sure that we're emphasizing that. City staff input, we've made this really simple with five points here. We actually have a 19-page document from city staff with their thoughts. And this is what we often see, is that your city staffs have... And this is what we often see, is that your city staffs have a really clear understanding of where the sticky spots are in code. And they're often in places that are not glamorous but have very high impact. A little change somewhere can completely change your development outcomes. Again, clarity, structure, housing, diversity in this, this concept of getting to mixed use in an efficient way, how to approach your landscape and tree preservation, all things we're hearing consistently from each of the documents, each of the bodies that we're talking to along the way. Which brings us to y'all tonight. You as a city council, you are where the buck stops from a policy standpoint. And so we want to set you up for, to give us some direction on what do y'all, what do y'all want to see here? What haven't we heard already, as the case may be? Because you may have looked at this and be like, "Yeah, I'm on board with that. I'm on board with that, too." So thinking about what's missing out of this. So for this part of the discussion, the leading discussion, I'm going to hand this over to my counterpart, Erica, to walk through the rest of this.
All right. Thank you, Chance, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Chance mentioned, this portion of the presentation is intended to kind of set you guys up with some conversation topics. If this kind of triggers a thought for you, for something that you would like to share with us and what you want to see in the UDC update. So first, starting with the residential neighborhoods, we've heard a lot of interest in increased density and mixed density within neighborhoods. So what does that look like?
Erica, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm a little bit deaf, and I've turned my hearing aids all the way up to the maximum and I'm still having trouble hearing, yeah.
Yes, sorry about that. Is that better?
Chance, I didn't have any trouble hearing you at all.
I know, I'm loud. I'm sorry.
Sure. Well, so starting with the residential neighborhoods, and we've heard a lot of interest and support for increased density and mixed density development. So we would like to hear more about what does that look like for you all? Is that allowing accessory dwelling units citywide? Is that duplexes in more locations, the missing middle, kind of the three and fourplex town home type development in certain locations? Is that something that we should look at creating a new zoning district for? Is that appropriate in some of your existing districts? And more broadly, what makes for good residential development? What are the characteristics that you would like to see?
I want to talk to you about what our authority is with regard to ADUs. I know the legislature has recently overridden some of the regulations that cities and HOAs have with regard to ADUs. But I know that a number of HOAs just flat out will not allow ADUs. My neighbor moved to Blackhawk because they couldn't do an ADU in my HOA.
Will you please define...
Does the city council have authority to, I'm sorry, to override homeowners association regulations about accessory dwelling units, commonly thought of as mother-in-law cottages?
Sure. I can answer that, and then you had a question about ADU definition.
Well, yeah, give examples of what it could be.
Sure. So an accessory dwelling unit is exactly what it sounds like. You've got a primary dwelling unit, that's your house, a townhouse, something like that that maybe you live in. An accessory dwelling is something that you add to your lot that is secondary. Sometimes you hear these called a granny flat, a garage apartment. Sometimes it's called a mother-in-law house. It's, there's a variety of terms that are used for it, but generally you're talking about some type of small unit that is placed typically in like the backyard or over a garage or something like that. So that's what we're talking about here. And then you asked about the concept of does a city regulation preempt a HOA regulation? And my answer to that is when it comes to that, that type of situation, your city regulations are agnostic on what a private standard, what a private regulation is. They don't care what that private regulation is, because the city cannot enforce that. It also cannot preempt it. That's hanging out purely in that civil space as a civil law matter that the city does not get involved in.
So to the extent that the city says you can have ADUs citywide, that really doesn't mean you can have ADUs citywide. That means you can have ADUs citywide unless you live in an HOA that restricts your use of ADUs, which is almost everywhere in Flugerville.
Right. So what you typically will see is cities will have an approach on their building permitting for that that says, you know, "Yes, this is your city permit. Please be aware that you may live in a neighborhood that has some covenants in place. It is on you to address that." But from the city side, we are hands-off, we are purely in that inspection space now, off we go. Make sense?
Okay. So we have, we have, we have a limited ability to produce regulation to the extent that it comes through the homeowners association. And because of the way that Flugerville has developed, outside of Old Town, almost everywhere is in a homeowners association.
Right.
Okay. That's important to start with.
One thing I wanted to throw out related to that, though, is that I think that's going to be really important to consider as you're thinking about the format and how this is published, right? Because when you're talking about an ADU, you're really talking about existing homeowners, right? Adding on. And so I think their needs in terms of a UDC are very different, right? Whether that is, for example, pre-approved plans, right? For some that we can fast-track and get them through the permitting process if they are allowed to quickly, without having to go ask a bunch of questions about what exactly we want to be able to see. So I think that good distinction there between some of our other new residential or commercial updates versus something that is going to be primarily used by an existing homeowner.
Right. So I have a question about new neighborhoods that are going to be built with homeowners associations, if that is a typical regulation in homeowners, which is mine as well. So is that, and does the city have any authority in new neighborhoods when they're coming and they want to have an HOA about an ADU?
They, so a city does not in that certain, like you're asking, you know, if a new neighborhood comes in and they restrict an ADU, they say you can't have ADUs even if your local ordinance allows it, they can absolutely do that. Another good example, it's a completely different environment, is you see a big commercial development. And what you often see in a big commercial development is anti-competitive clauses, where if you get a, say, a large grocer, they have an expectation that within that development, you'll place a restriction as a developer that says, "Hey, we have this one here. There will be no other large-scale grocers put in place on this development." That's pretty common occurrence. So same principle applies to an ADU as well. Where the city, you know, you could put three grocery stores there. The city wouldn't care as long as you meet code. The developer cares because they've got a contract law arrangement with their tenants.
So the impact of the ADU in our environment of having a lot of HOAs, especially, you know, if we have PIDs and other things, they're usually going to have an HOA associated with that. Then the ADU is a limited impact for our city. So maybe other options may be more worthwhile and focusing on.
Yeah. That's what we often talk about with this. Your goal with this is to provide the menu. When you go to a restaurant, you don't have to order everything on the menu, but you want to have something that you want on that menu somewhere, if that makes sense.
What is our regulation on ADUs right now?
They're currently allowed in limited circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before I move on?
Well, you had a lot of questions. I think it was like 10 different questions that you, so I have forgotten what you had said. Something about missing middle, what, like, so for me, I would like to see more ownership opportunities in, you know, entry-level homes, whether, you know, or whether that's condos, whether that's a duplex or townhomes, something that's smaller, less maintenance, like, well, actually could be the beginning or the end, when you, you know, don't want a lot of house or you don't want a lot of maintenance, and you want something that's affordable to get your foot into the market to own and build wealth. So multifamily with ownership opportunities, I think, are very different than multifamily that are rental.
Okay.
And I think tying that into one of the things you have on here around market and developer considerations, obviously there is market pressure right now for a build-to-rent type of situations, that I don't know that that's something we would want to encourage necessarily, right? I think, to your point, I think homeownership is ultimately what we want to see, and opportunities to get to that point.
Do we have authority to regulate that?
To regulate the build-to-rent?
Yeah.
That's something we've talked with city staff about. One option could be requiring plating on individual lots. So they would eventually have the ability to go back to traditional, single-family, traditional ownership structure.
Okay.
Yeah. Generally, as a rule, within your, within your city regulations, you can't differentiate by, you know, the type of ownership and things like that. You're going to be focused on your form and on your use, and the means of ownership is something completely separate.
Okay. Sorry. Why did you ask that?
I'm just curious, what are, what can we do? The legislature gives us a lot of authority. There are a lot of, there are good ideas, bad ideas, and ideas that are legal, which include some good ideas and some bad ideas. But not all good ideas are legal and not all bad ideas are illegal. I want to see what our range of options are.
I understand what you just said, but I guess I'm curious about that specific question about the renters. I want to know where that came from and, you know...
Is that more Councilman Murray's question?
Well, we have some communities here in Flugerville that are, you know, the single-family detached houses that are entirely rental communities. There's been a lot of discussion over the last several years about whether or not that's good, you know, who's behind that, you know, do we want to have more of that or less of that? If we want to have less of that, or if we want to have more of that, I want to know what are the limits of our authority to do that? Because if we, we don't want any blue houses, but the law says you can't regulate the color of houses, then it doesn't matter that we don't want blue houses. So I just want to know what the range is of what we can do. I'm expecting you to tell us that.
Okay. So, so Julia, how, what we look at is how well can you future-proof a land use? And what are the implications on different pathways? So when we think about, you know, build-to-rent product, we think about, well, what if it wasn't a build-to-rent product? Can it be adapted easily? So there's two paths there. You can require plating on individual lots and it's still a build-to-rent product. You'll actually have an example of that in Flugerville already. That works pretty well because they're fee-simple lots, they're easy. That is every, you know, mortgage ever sort of example. If you have it all on a single lot, or you look at condoizing it, it becomes complicated pretty quickly. Condo regimes operate on some, under some different state laws. I'm not a, I'm not a real estate professional. You don't want me to go deep, on a deep dive through that, other than there are some interesting liabilities, things that come up on constructability or construction quality language, under kind of the torts language of state laws and stuff like that, where it gets really weird really fast. But the, and also there's some things that will come into play with getting a mortgage on a condoized product, where they start looking at, well, what's the percentage of these in the condo that are, that our owner occupied? And it starts to shape the rates that they get, eligibility, down payment requirements, things like that. So it starts to get kind of murky in that space. That's why for like the, you know, the build-to-rent type single-family model, we push towards, hey, go ahead and plat these, put them on public streets, let's make this easy.
All right. Hold on a second, Chance. Madam City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, we already have some what look like single-family detached that are actually condoized units. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So we have some of both of these, and those condoized things that look like single-family detached, those are going to be, are those, A, are those issues we can regulate? And B, what are the, what are the problems that that creates for the city? I know that there's, there are issues about the streets in that area. What other issues are there for the, for the city as far as those are concerned?
I'm unaware of it.
I apologize. You may have to refresh. Why, what are the issues with the streets? What do you mean?
Well, they're, they're private streets. They're not, they're not public streets. So we have perhaps less control over how those are built and maintained than we would have if it was an, if it was a public street. We can't, for instance, go in and resurface that street if the residents want us to, because, no, sorry, that's your private condo development, that's, that's not our monkey, not our circus.
They are required to build to our street standards, just to let you, there are rules that we require for them to do.
For the building. But what about the maintenance? What about, you know, you know, we have...
And maintenance.
We have a plan for how we do that for the city streets.
I'll let Chance go ahead and answer. Can you regulate? That was your part of the question. And then I, they maintain them is the rule. So if, you're saying if a resident called us and said, "Hey, we want our road repaid," we would push it back to the owner and say that's part of the agreement as they maintain? There might be a difference in what they maintain versus what we maintain. It's fair.
That's where I was going.
But they are built to our standards. I wouldn't say they're as traveled as many of our streets. I may argue that, that they, they're less traveled, but they are built to our standards.
They tend to be more cul-de-sac, so you go in and out, not through.
Okay. And that's exactly, getting exactly to what you can regulate in that, because Julie, what we tell cities is, don't, don't say ownership in your, in your code. Avoid that. Focus on what's the use, what's the performance, things like that, that time, place, manner kind of language. But getting to like kind of what you're asking about for like, what are the mitigating issues that come up? You know, yes, you can establish clear standards for private streets. You already have those. You can have standards in there for how do you handle public infrastructure that is within that? Your water lines, your sewer lines that go through the, through the, through the essentially neighborhood. Your standards for connectivity can still apply. You have to have this many points of access. You can establish whether those private streets can be gated or not, which makes a difference in how does that connectivity actually play out? You can have standards for, hey, if you're going to have private streets, this is the type of entity and structure you have to have in place to maintain that, and you have to be, have this type of financial capacity that is basically stable for that. Basically, it's making sure that the HOA that gets put in place is solvent, so they don't show up 10 years later and say, "Hey, guess what? We're out of money. City, please take these over. By the way, we haven't filled a single pothole in 10 years." Because then you get to go down the path of special, special exactions and stuff like that that's just unpleasant.
Would we be required to do something like that?
Say what?
Would we be required to take over private streets?
No, you don't have to. You can always say no.
That would just be a choice.
Yeah.
They would, they could come and ask you to do it.
Yeah. What we try to do is create a situation where you avoid the question, because we recognize that that's a pressure cooker. When you have constituents coming to you and saying, "My infrastructure is terrible. Please help us." And when you're sitting there on the dais, that's a hard place to be.
Right.
Where you're kind of at this war with yourself over the fiduciary responsibility of the city versus what your constituents are asking for, and it's not a great feeling. So we try to avoid that.
I had a clarifying question for Councilmember Kaufman. I think while we were talking, I don't, I want to make sure that I heard you properly, that you want to discourage renting? If you could just kind of clarify that for me a little bit?
Sure, yeah. That's not necessarily what I was trying to say. I was referring specifically to these newer developments that are specifically building essentially single-family homes explicitly owned by investors in order to rent them out, which reduces our total land and home, you know, inventory for folks to eventually be able to...
Noted, but always know that I'm going to sit here as a person with lived experience, and I think that homeownership and renting also creates diversity for the people who live here.
Yeah. Yeah, I certainly wouldn't say it's an outright, something we shouldn't have, right? I think when we're talking about diversity, it needs to be every sense of the type of diverse housing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, and on a, on a related note, in the neighborhoods, we wanted to gauge your interest and thoughts on incorporating commercial uses in neighborhoods. These are things like neighborhood services. So maybe there's a market in the corner, so you can walk to get groceries rather than having to drive everywhere. So where would that be appropriate? What types of uses? What types of scale would be appropriate to make that desirable in neighborhoods if it is desirable? Also connectivity, both vehicular and pedestrian. So maybe looking at shorter block lengths in certain areas, maybe a connectivity index that requires more frequent intersections to navigate more easily? Or do we want to be more flexible on that and defer more to market demands?
Can you expand on the length of the blocks and how that affects? Or what are the important considerations?
Sure. I believe right now there's a 1,000-foot block length, and if you go longer than that, then there's a pedestrian cut-through that's required. Um, so typically we, uh, would recommend that more dense neighborhoods, more, um, urban districts have shorter block lengths, as short as maybe 400 feet, um, to help create more connections throughout the neighborhood. It's not a, a long block that you have to hike down to, to get anywhere. So we'll see some cities that move on a scale with shorter block lengths in more dense areas and then up to 1,000 or 1,200 feet in length for block lengths in more rural parts of the city.
So the advantage from a developer point of view of a longer block length is you're, you have, uh, less the space, less acreage that you're using for roads. So you have more space that you can use for housing or, or commercial purposes.
Correct.
Right, so part of what we always think about when writing regulations like this is how can you design the regulation so that you're getting the better outcome that you want? But, as a city, but you're also recognizing the developer math of it and making sure that, okay, if we're asking for these shorter block lengths, are developers able to get the lot yield or the unit yield that they need for their developer math to work? Because ideally, you want your developers to, to be like a partner for you in this. It shouldn't be adversarial. It should be, hey, if we're all on the same page, we are marching lockstep and it's going really well. Um, it's when, you know, things are getting out of, out of whack that you get the more confrontational style. So that's what we think about with this, is how to make sure that the math works on that. So if you're asking for a more, you know, stringent standard, are you doing a way that you're setting up a developer for success where they will do it? And maybe not do it with a smile on their face, but do it with at least a neutral look on their face of, yes, this works for me, uh, on that. Because what we think about like that, those long block lengths, there's the walkability issue of how do you get places? You know, you've got a kid on one block, kid on the other. How can they get there to go play with their, their neighbor friend? But there's also like, you know, looking at, you know, the pedestrian cut-throughs and things like that, are those the best solution? Do you have good eyes on the street for that? Um, uh, when you have these long blocks, you have people parking on the street, you end up with kind of these like choke points that'll happen on those. Versus if you've got shorter blocks, A, that's less likely to happen, and B, if it does, you've got alternatives. You've got more detour options to get around it. Uh, so that's also what we think about that in terms of like emergency services response or something as simple as picking up trash, um, is creating options so you don't get kind of landlocked like that.
How does the block length affect the amount of roads that you have to build in, within the neighborhood?
Uh, it can result in, in some increased linear footage of that, but that's why we also say, look at what your yield of units is. Because you want the math to work for the city too. If you are increasing the number of, you know, sometimes streets are called assets. I often call streets liabilities. Uh, if, if, if you're increasing your liabilities, you want to make sure that from a financial performance point of view, that the develop, that the development long-term is performing well so that you can afford that maintenance down the road. And you're, you're not having to do things like deferred maintenance where you're like, oh, we're not going to, you know, do that paving maintenance course. And so you skip that step and the next thing you know, your, your street that was supposed to have a 40-year life ends up with a 20-year life. And now you're doing a bond election for it when we really would have rather waited another 20 years. So that's what we try to think about with that, is making sure that your math as a city works well with it. Because otherwise, you end up upside down and you've created a, an unsustainable financial model.
So conceptually, when we're considering changes in block lengths or these other things, is there any way to have examples where you would say, okay, here's this set amount of acreage? Here's what it could look like with these requirements. Here, what it could look like with these requirements? What would be that long-term maintenance? What would be the estimated revenue to cover that maintenance with the different scenarios? Um, because I'm not really being able to visualize how block lengths make a more dense community. So I don't know, but if there's some pictures I can look at somewhere.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Along the way, what we, uh, we'll shift into a lot more visuals and things like that. Um, about, about two-thirds of people are visual learners, so we'll lean into that as we go forward.
And these changes are meant to be options to what we currently have, not instead of?
Right, so that's when we're starting, when, when, kind of what I talked about with, we're looking at the full menu. Are you, is your, is your menu of development offering up what you need it to, to align with your comprehensive plan? To align with what your market's asking for, to align with what you're hearing from constituents? We want all of that to line up so that everybody's got their options and that they're all options that perform well for you, for one reason or another, from your policy standpoint as a city council. If that makes sense.
Now, let me pick up on that. Um, you're talking about what the, what the market is looking for. What are, what are developers asking to build in Flugerville that they are not currently allowed to build?
So that's a stakeholder conversation we haven't had yet. Um, so, uh, that's something that we'll want to talk to them about. Some of that was discussed within that diagnostic report. But that's another conversation to have along the way, is what we want to do is understand where are you wanting to go as a, as a city policymaking council? And then looking at, okay, where does the market think it wants to go? What are its barriers to getting to where you might want it to get to? Because it could be, hey, the developer says, we think this mixed-use product could work, but we're struggling to get financing for it because nobody's done it before. That's a different challenge than, oh, we don't think it'll get the rents. It's not going to pencil. Um, so it's looking at what's the risk issue they're dealing with. So we thought, we always in codes talk a lot about, you know, reducing barriers, uh, as, as the key language point rather than trying to force an outcome. Um, and then finding out what's the why? Uh, why can't this happen? And then, because that could emerge as, maybe there's a regulatory incentive that we need to create? Maybe it's a conversation with economic development? It could be any number of things to understand what's the barrier and how do we pull that out?
And, and have you done anything in terms of, up to this point, maybe this is down the road, uh, looking to citizens in Flugerville? What, what housing options do you want that you don't have? Is that something we're going to see in six months?
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a great point. So we have some of that information from back in the comprehensive plan process. I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides here to give you a preview toward the end. But we, we do have a website that's set up for the project where we have a comment option where anybody can leave a comment at any time if they want to, to share information with us. Um, some of our next steps, as Chance mentioned earlier, after this step, we're going to really jump off and start drafting content, working with city staff and the advisory committee. But coming up soon, we have our first virtual public engagement, um, where we want to ask the community uh, different types of information that will inform the code update, and that can be one of those questions. So that's, um, something we wanted to hear from you all tonight as well. If there are specific topics like that in mind where you would really want to hear from the community, X, Y, and Z, we have an upcoming opportunity where it would be a, a great time to ask them at the beginning of this process so we can get that included.
And you're going to work with Roger and our comms team to make sure that gets out to the maximum number of people?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so I'm, I'll, I'll be very, very curious to hear what our citizens have to say about that. Now, uh, Councilman Terry is not here, so I'm going to ask the question that he would ask if he was here. What about the people who aren't here yet? Because that's most of the people in Flugerville 10 years from now are people who aren't yet here, or certainly 20 years from now. Um, what are they looking for and how do we find out who they are and get, solicit their opinions?
Sure, um, and that's always difficult because you're asking to like guess in the future. Uh, but we, we look to, to different, uh, opportunities for that. So that's talking with some of your business community for, hey, what are their employees looking for? Uh, because that's telling you, because you'd like people that work here to also live here, right? That's, that's your ideal situation.
That's our ideal situation, although we, we haven't, we haven't had much success with that. Even though the number of jobs in Flugerville has, has grown pretty dramatically over the last 10 years, the number of people who live in Flugerville and work in Flugerville has stayed pretty constant. And what we're finding is we've created new jobs in Flugerville and people from outside Flugerville come in and, and take those jobs.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, you know, talking to your business community about that. It's talking to like your school district, for example. That's usually your largest public employer is your school, school district. Finding out where do their teachers live? Why are they choosing to live where they are? Um, you know, it's, uh, I've heard folks talk about the, the community that rents in, in Flugerville. That can actually be a great opportunity to find out, hey, what's your pathway? Are you looking to find a pathway to ownership? Are you a renter by choice? Are you a renter by necessity? What do you need for your success on your path? And so they're a good, a good group to ask because sometimes they're your next generation of home buyers maybe. Or maybe they're not. And, and so it's understanding what they're looking for along the way. Uh, but usually it's that business community that's super helpful because that's telling you, people that are already touching Flugerville, and what would make them, you know, come in and put down, put down their roots here. Um, sometimes it's asking people that are already here, hey, what got you here in the first place? What were your values? Um, things like that. Because a lot of times those become a self-fulfilling prophecy for a city. Um, it's almost starts to self-select, uh, because, you know, you have, you're the trail capital. Y'all are likely to attract people that are interested in the outdoors. You know, there's things like that that start to happen just because of how you're investing as a city too. So there's no clean way to predict it, uh, but you can talk to enough people where you can get an idea.
Um, are you guys aware of the bond that was passed by the school district to create teacher housing?
I'm aware that it exists. I haven't read a whole lot about it.
Okay, so that might, that, that, that might be something that, uh, that we should explore. Um, and, you know, maybe we need to have that discussion specifically with the school district. What are they planning to do? And are there any opportunities in our amendment to the development code uh, that would make that, uh, easier for them to do in a way that, uh, that works in the long term for, uh, for their teachers?
Sure.
Great point. Um, moving along, just from residential, now looking more broadly at residential and non-residential or mixed-use developments. Um, what type of emphasis do we want to see on building design and quality? So in your districts right now, there's a heavier emphasis on design in downtown and, and the corridor districts. Um, there are things like requiring development, buildings to be brought up closer to the street. So smaller setbacks, having parking behind the building, um, building articulation or offsets in the facade. Um, what percentage of the facade has to be used for windows, things like that, that, that have a heavier emphasis on design? So is that something that we would like to see more broadly in other areas of the city? Um, or is that something that we, we think is already most appropriate in downtown and in the corridor districts? And we want to be more flexible in other areas? And also-
I think that's a-
I'm sorry?
Good opportunity to get stakeholder feedback from the builders.
Okay.
And the developers about, um, you know, what are the demands, you know, from, for their products? And I, I don't know all the, the reasons behind some of the rules that we have or regulations, so I'll need to learn more to be able to provide feedback.
And I do think in looking at that conversation in the future too, right? Qualitatively, I think our quality of life is super important to us. And so I think it is a valid conversation to have, obviously with the development community because it's going to affect their math. But also we've got to make sure that we're upholding standards. I think that continues to encourage folks to move here, right, and to participate in our community.
Right, because always depending on the developers isn't always the best option. They're going to go the cheapest route or the least expensive route, so that may not be what we want.
They're just one stakeholder. One, one stakeholder to consider. There, there's other, there's others.
He'll go the most profitable route, which is not always the cheapest route.
There you go. Now, wherever you were, we're getting to the same point.
If you're, if you're building a retail space, obviously a lot of windows is very, very important. But if you're not building a retail space, do we need to have a one-size? Is it appropriate to have a one-size-fits-all regulation about how much window space you have to have in the front of your building?
That's a great point. I mean, uh, you know, everybody knows here that my biggest complaint is, what is that, Mayor? There you go. And, you know, a lot of developers choose to not put windows or very many, or make the design very appealing. So, yes, something like that, hopefully you're definitely looking to.
I think that's something we want to, I would love to see in some of your all's drafts, is how do we incentivize the type of development, the type of businesses that we want to attract? And not necessarily just compete on cost strictly, but on quality? And are we actually giving our residents what they, what they need? Earlier, you mentioned neighborhood scale, retail and neighborhood services, right? We don't have a whole lot of that right now. I think it'd be amazing. We have a fantastic entrepreneurship. Um, we have a ton of entrepreneurs in our community. It'd be great if we could find ways within our code to make it easier for them to, you know, hang a shingle. Um, so I think that should be part of the larger conversation, I think, because how do we make sure that we're taking care of both that quality of life and also how do we incentivize the right behaviors in development for what we're, what we're looking for?
I think we do, um, contemplate that in the Aspire 2040 Plan, if I'm not mistaken. It was a few years ago that we worked on that.
I want to pick up on both, uh, what Jonathan said and Councilman Ryan and what you said, Chance, about, um, maximizing-
There we go.
I'm sorry, about what you said about, uh, maximizing, uh, retail, uh, and, uh, neighborhood walkability. Um, we have, uh, an area that we can visualize that works for that, sort of. Um, at downtown, at the corner of Railroad, uh, and, and Pecan. Within four or five blocks of there, there's a lot of walkable neighborhood retail. Okay, so we can see that. How do we make that happen in other places? What can we do with the UDC that lets us, um, create that kind of thing? And that also, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Madam City Manager, uh, that area generates a disproportionate amount of our city sales tax as well. So if we could create that nodes like that in other parts of the city, that might be good for our, uh, our budget woes as well. Am I wrong?
I, I won't publicly discuss who your top sales tax producers are, but you might not be accurate.
You're leading the witness, Councilor.
But I, I will analyze it with that thinking, not at the moment.
All right.
Okay, and continuing to talk about site design, uh, we'll be looking at the parking ratios, both the minimum and the maximum, as well as the parking standards. Um, so I mentioned earlier, you have some standards now in the, in the corridor districts that require parking to be located behind the building. Um, so we can look at some, some standards like that. Also, um, what types of screening is required? What can we do to improve walkability as a whole and get better streetscapes? Um, and then the last item on here is, uh, an idea that we wanted to propose is a, a point-based system that allows more flexibility. So what this would look like would be a, a development would need to achieve, we'll say, 20 points as an example. And there's a menu of options and they can pick and choose to get their minimum 20 points. So that has some increased flexibility and gives them the opportunity to, to decide what works best for them. The downside of that is it's not quite as predictable as if you prescribe every, uh, every standard that they have to, to meet. Um, but that is an option that some cities choose to go to. Um, also another side of that is you can use that to decide what's eligible for staff approval. Um, so maybe something can be approved administratively if they exceed the minimum required points by 25%. But if they don't do that, then it would require an SUP or some other process where they would have to get additional approvals. So that's an, an option to incentivize going above and beyond their, their requirements so they can get a faster approval from staff.
Can you give us some examples of cities that use that kind of system?
Um, we've been working with the City of Edmond, Oklahoma.
City of?
Edmond, Oklahoma and Oklahoma City, Denver.
Nobody in Texas.
Uh, we've worked with this in a few other cities in Texas too. Uh, Bee Cave has a really version of this.
Okay.
Uh, we're working with a few, with a few other current clients because this is still a, a relatively new approach. Um, if you aren't familiar with, with Edmond, Oklahoma, Edmond, Oklahoma is essentially like the Georgetown of the Oklahoma City metro. Uh, is my best explanation for it. Um, but the, uh, but that's where we've experimented with that the most. Um, I think did Tomball do this too, or did they not?
Um, Tomball, we had a, in the menu option and we gave them the flexibility. We didn't set the threshold for allowing staff approval if they went above and beyond. That was something Edmond was looking at.
The part why we've liked using that is it also gives you a pathway for if you're going to create regulatory incentives for going above and beyond, like for example, you might say, uh, maybe you're restricting impervious cover. I don't know. And you can say, well, if you get 20 points, this is your 70% impervious cover. If you get up to 25 points, you can increase that impervious cover up to, I don't know, 75%. Still have to design for that from a stormwater standpoint, but it gives them a pathway. Or maybe it's an additional height. Um, so it's building in what we call bonuses, or those types of incentives based on achieving higher performance. Uh, we also sometimes like to take different parts of regulations and let them talk to each other. So you have landscape standards, you have building design standards. In some cases, you want the developers like, I'd actually rather spend more money on the building to make it look great and less on, on the landscaping site quality. So provide a pathway where they can do that some, or vice versa. It might flip depending on where it is. Um, you know, for an indu, an industrial building, you might actually prefer, you know what? Spend your, spend your coin on, on site improvements, screening, things like that. You know, let the, let the rec, big rectangle be the big rectangle. If it's a downtown infill, they might want to go all in on building design. And, and their, extended their landscaping is some street tree installation or something like that. Um, so that's part of what we like about these point systems. I also like it because it makes the, it makes the design professional do their job, um, a little bit too. a little bit too. So, uh, you know, make the landscape architects do what they do best. Uh, architects do what they do best instead of it just becoming a formula, uh, which is what tends to happen.
Sorry. Also another point on the building design and the point-based system. So cities aren't allowed to regulate building materials anymore.
Right.
Um, so that could be something that you offer points for that. It's not a requirement, um, but that gives the, the developer something in exchange for providing higher-quality building materials.
So you, you get extra points if you use a certain kind of tile that we really like.
Yeah.
It's consistent with historical.
Big asterisk that goes on that is as long as it is not the only pathway and there are reasonable other pathways to the same incentive. Because the, the state law is pretty clear too. You cannot backdoor the requirement, um, through an indirect regulation too. So you have to be really smart about how you set up your points so that it's not the only pathway and it's financially equivalent to other pathways.
Okay.
May I ask about, oh, sorry.
Yeah, let me make this point because we're running out of time. And very, just something I've been listening to is that I think, and you mentioned infill. Uh, I think we have a lot of infill opportunities and I think those are some of the ones that are even more challenging, but they also are more conducive to the retail residential walkability environment. And I've seen a little bit of that happening, but not enough of it. Makes sense?
We're on the parking slide, so I just was wondering, um, what are the concerns about minimum or max, maximum parking ratios? Um, either from the city or from the business community? Because I've, I've heard some things about it's very expensive to open up a site because you have to do a lot of parking and whatnot. What do you guys consider?
So the, and parking reforms like this big conversation in planning world. I don't know if y'all have kept up with that. Um, if you haven't, I don't blame you. Um, it's very firmly in the very nerdy planning world. But the, uh, but there's kind of been this discussion about minimum parking ratios and the science or lack thereof behind them. Um, and kind of the open question has become, is this something that the market's actually better at determining for themselves? Uh, the idea being that a developer is not going to set themselves up for failure uh, by seriously underparking their project. Um, from a city side, cities are thinking about, you know, we don't want big empty parking lots. Big empty parking lots do not make money. They do not generate sales tax. Uh, a building with a cash register and it does. So, uh, there's a lot of that that goes into that as well. Um, so we've been, but we've been seeing many cities start shifting towards either a light version of parking reform where they've dropped them for some uses. Some have just said, you know what, we're tossing it all out. Some have said, we're tossing out minimums and we're adding a maximum. Um, there's a broad spectrum that you can go to on that. Uh, but I think the key theme has been, you know, maybe part, minimum parking ratios are something the market's just better at, um, to, to sort through.
All right, so that wraps up our questions and topics that we had outlined. But we'd happy to, happy to take any questions or comments, feedback that you have on any of those topics or anything else that you have on your mind that we didn't already cover in the input we've heard before.
I just was curious, um, when we're presented with different options, if we have, you know, like, what is this impact? The city's future obligations for infrastructure or maintenance of infrastructure? And is there a different long-term, you know, cost associated with one option or the other? Or just so that we know when we're, when we're considering these changes or the different options, what the long-term liabilities might be?
Yeah, so you're kind of talking about the cost of different development patterns.
Just for informational purposes so that we, you know, also on the revenue side. If you make these changes and you have more density, what could this, you know, you know, a, a single-family development look like? Or what if we had the mixed use or the what, you know, like, how does that affect our revenue as well as our long-term maintenance costs?
Yeah, that's actually something that's in your aspire plan right now is a, is a, a net revenue position analysis that looked at the different future land uses. Uh, so that's something we can certainly look at for how to apply that similar method to how, what happens with, you know, code outcomes. You know, once you get from that 50,000-foot view to the 500-foot view of, of, of what does your future city look like? We can, we can, we can look at how possible that is, what data we have available to model that.
Thank you.
I think there are a lot of elements in the process of, of looking at any UDC amendments um, or changes because there are a lot of moving pieces and elements that impact residential, commercial, developers, um, the, the landscape, the environment. I mean, there's just so many pieces to it that certainly we don't want to, um, create roadblocks for citizens, developers, uh, the environment and so forth. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few minutes. Uh, we have no other items on the agenda, so we are adjourned.